Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of March 27, 2018. First up is a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? I'd like to table the minutes of the last meeting.
Sounds good.
And we'll move on to Department Head Committee Chair Updates. We have the District Two Road Commissioner here.
Dave Wenshaw, District Two. Originally, I got put on the minutes there. I was a little frustrated on Saturday's meeting, but coming up here complaining about it's not going to really solve any problems. So are we going to be meeting with the Finance meeting any other time that you know of?
I'm pretty positive they're going to call you back.
Yeah, okay. And is there any requests that they're going to want from us before we get there so this time there we can have a productive meeting?
Most likely a description of your summer work plan, what you'd like to do with your summer line.
Did you?
I don't.
You don't?
I don't.
I don't know where it went.
You took it back.
Did I take it back?
Yep.
Okay.
But we probably have a copy of last year's if that's what you said.
Oh, I'm sure if I look hard enough on my computer, I can find it somewhere. But I'm going through my papers, I couldn't seem to find it, but...
Did anybody find them after the meeting?
I didn't.
Okay.
And preferably, I don't know when they do their meetings, we're not doing another Saturday deal, right?
No, no.
Okay, good.
I'm assuming it'll be in an evening.
Okay, I guess at this point here, I was a little, I wasn't sure if we had gone over the bridge stuff, the article for the bridge, we were sufficient with that?
I think so. We were just looking at proper wording for what that 20,000 is overlooked.
Well, we had talked about that at the Road Committee meeting that one night, and we talked about possibly adding in some verbiage that, you know, if the monies that were set forward by the town, if there was money left that we can use that towards some of the repairs.
Okay.
But I think we've probably, I guess I could come up and we can, I'll send you a draft of some sort, and you guys can proofread it and see if that's, you know, what you guys want to put on the warrant.
Just remember, we've promised Warren Finance a warrant by Friday, so that only gives us a day or two.
Yeah, I, yeah, I can probably have it to you by Thursday. I won't be around tomorrow.
And we did, we did get an email from Warren Finance, and they are, as soon as they get this warrant, I trust they'll put together a schedule and be in contact with myself and the department heads, and we'll get scheduled based on who they want to meet with. So we'll make sure that anything they want in advance, you've got notice to put together for them.
Yeah, okay. Okay, just give me a heads up on the meeting anyway, so we know.
Yep, they'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I know I wasn't on the agenda, Lois Missouche Cemetery Committee. I just want to remind everybody of springtime, so there's five or six of us that are going to be out in the woods checking out removing and adding flags and stuff like that, so just be aware, we're going to be out there on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committee chair updates while we're here? No? Okay. Old business, we have the Atlantic Broadband Agreement. Oh, there he is.
So for the last couple of weeks, we've been kind of reviewing this. It does have the 4.5 agreement, the 4.5 franchise in it that we talked about, and Mike, I think, has picked up on a couple of other minor things.
Yeah, I actually was just reviewing it before coming here, and I had both contracts from 2008 and 2018 off side by side, and they are pretty much a mirror image of each other. There's some minor things relating to VCRs or technology that's no longer utilized, some small thing about $2 million difference in the insurance policy, I think, catastrophic.
That they carry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of five million, it's three million.
Right, and we got that in the new bond when the company changed over, remember? We had that notice.
Other than that, I didn't see many or anything.
Yeah, just like Mike, that was the easiest thing for me to do as well, just take the old one and the new one and put them together, and they are pretty much identical. Ten years, 4.5, but certainly, I mean, it is a legal binding contract, so we would always recommend having the attorney look at it just to be sure.
There is, it's very legally written, so a lot of law terminology.
So are you looking to cross out any VCR reference? Are you saying VCR was the old one?
They removed, yeah.
Oh, okay. So you don't want to change anything in here? Okay.
Not that I could see, no.
Okay.
I'm happy with it, but I'm not a lawyer. I haven't, I don't know all the terms that were written down in that agreement.
I, I mean, it seemed pretty basic to me, besides I didn't get into like all the exact definitions and whatnot, but the actual agreement on the front page and then the term and the percentage.
Mm-hmm, it's all in there.
Yeah, it's all in there, so I don't know if you want to just have the attorney take a quick look?
I mean, that's your call, but I certainly would recommend it.
Yeah.
He usually catches the things that we might miss.
Yeah, there may be some minor typos too in that draft.
Yeah, there was a couple of spelling.
And formatting, but other than that, I'm pleased with it.
Okay.
So we'll send it over to them, and if he gets any changes, I'll send them to you, but if all goes well, we'll put it on next week's agenda for signature.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, Flat Ground Road.
So just following up, I know that more some of you know, we met with the town's attorney prior to, Joe Lenkowski had drafted the agreement that he thought the town could enter into between the property owners of Flat Ground Road, and he asked that our general attorney, Burke and Clegg, take a look at it, so where did we go from today's meeting? What's next?
Well, it sounded like because if this agreement were to be adopted, it would tie the town down to putting money into it, and so it has to go before the town floor to be voted on to accept the agreement, which...
And before we do that, didn't he say that we still needed to get everybody's signatures?
Yes.
Okay.
So it didn't, I mean, what do we have for time to get?
Well, I mean, we have, so short of promising the Warren Finance, the warrant, I mean, you can put the agreement on there and ask the townspeople if they want to approve it, you know, and you can put the monetary in either the article before it or after it, and if one fails, then the second one is obsolete. And then if at the last minute you don't get all the signatures, you can, you know, pull it off the warrant or vote to table it indefinitely on town meeting. But if you, you know, but if you don't make a decision on whether or not it's going on there, you're going to, and we send the warrant off, you're better off to pull it, I mean, you can put it on and pull it if you're not prepared than the other way around.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
So what signatures do you need? Is that something the road commissioners are doing, the road committee?
Dennis, can I ask you?
Difference between signatures or did he say easements? I thought that he said that...
That was for a different...
Easements was a puzzle.
Oh, that was a buzzle.
So signatures on this agreement, I'm not sure...
It would have to be every resident that owns on that road.
And, okay, so it leaves a spot where you would list out the property owners? Do you remember what it looked like?
I guess I shouldn't have walked out there. So the agreement entered into, amongst other factors, so we need to get one of these to every property owner on Flat Ground Road and make sure that they...
Sign it and get it back to us.
I don't know if they can, I mean, they can sign it, but at least, right, agree to it. And you're saying that if all 32 property owners don't agree to it, it's not going on the warrant? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I mean, that's...
It's going to go on the warrant anyhow, but he said to make sure we still, you know, we're going to need those if it does pass. So, I mean, it's something we need to do. I don't think we need to do it before.
Oh, as long as, even if we get the agreement after the fact, you're saying? You want to make sure the townspeople approve it?
Well, I think it doesn't do any good to move it forward to the townspeople if there's five people on Flat Ground Road that don't even want to enter into the agreement. I think, I, that's how I took what he was saying.
And this isn't something that's a three quarters of...
It could, it's a three quarter, isn't it?
A three quarter?
It's a one easement, so that makes it three quarters.
So three quarters of the 32.
Why don't I double check with Brad?
Yeah, because I thought he said everybody.
Maybe I shouldn't have stepped out then, I misunderstood what he was saying. So you believe that only three quarters of the people need to sign it, and you guys believe that, did he tell you before or after the vote?
I thought he said put the vote forward. You know, we're still going to need to get those, you know, signatures, but it wasn't before the vote.
But you're right, it does make sense that why do it if you don't get the three quarters?
I will clarify with him in the morning. If that's the case, then we'll get a list of all the property owners to Dennis, and Dennis can help organize and get copies out and send them and so forth. Let me clarify exactly what he's looking for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could I get a copy of that after the meeting?
Yep, you can just have that one.
I can't remember if you emailed that to us or not.
Yes.
Okay, so that is on email. Okay, Buzzal Road.
So this was just a follow-up in the conversation last week, because there was some talk, I think, about Article 41, and I just want to make sure that everybody's clear as to why, if you pulled the 2010 town meeting warrant and you look for Article 41, at the end of Article 41, there's no clerk results of the minutes, or the results of that article, you need to go to the beginning of the warrant because someone at that town meeting made a motion to act on Article 41 out of order. So when they act, when they voted to act on it out of order, the minutes then got moved to the beginning. So there is a motion that was made for Article 41, the motion was seconded, but the article failed. So that Article 41 that asked to accept all of those roads, Buzzal Road included, to become a townway, did fail, but so the minutes are in there, they're just in a different spot. So I'm just looking for any direction from you as far as Buzzal Road, am I taking it off the agenda? What are we doing?
What did we decide, Kim? I feel like she was the one that spoke last, or did you speak last?
No, I didn't.
I don't really know.
I know.
I shouldn't, you know, of course, snow season's just about over, so now we're going to have some more time to maybe figure this out.
Right.
I know we talked about putting it in front of the people to see if they wanted to vote to just accept it.
I think that's the best plan.
So...
It's, it's not the cost of a $10,000 survey to do point, what was it? Point four seven?
What's the mileage? One point, what's it?
One point two.
One point two.
One point two, one point two seven for the entire road.
So you want a warrant article on this June warrant to ask the townspeople to accept?
One point two seven.
From a certain point down?
Yep.
From the intersection of Youngs Ridge Road to the intersection of Foley Way and Lakeside Drive as Buzzal Road.
That takes it all the way from one point to the other, doesn't it?
Yeah, just get it taken care of.
Again, so we'll draft something, send it over to you. Remember, I mean, Warren Finance, we told them Friday, so we've got a lot of articles to get on there.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
The entire thing? All the way to...
No.
No.
Foley Way and Lakeside.
To Lakeside to back to Youngs Ridge. Even though part of it is a town road, this would just clarify it to get it.
You're talking from Joe's Road?
The intersection of Foley Way and Lakeside Drive.
I see that.
I know, I know Joe's Road is...
I think that's kind of going to be, if you're going to do it, the town marker was not, originally, the town marker was way up further, so if you're going to clarify this instead of so we don't have a little section in between you have to worry about, wouldn't you be, wouldn't it be better from the intersection of Buzzal Road to Joe's Road, which is the end of Buzzal Road? That way there we don't have to worry.
Well, when I look at the town tax map, I do not see anything called Joe's Road on there.
Joe's Road's a little, it's got a sign, it's a little private.
Is it on a tree?
It's on a signpost. It was.
At Lakeside Drive?
Is that what it is?
Buzzal Road turns into Lakeside Drive.
Well, I guess I don't want to put anything on here that isn't on the tax map. If Joe's Road isn't on a tax map, I don't want to put it on there.
No, it was. I've got it, I know.
I feel like it is, but...
Is it?
I was pretty sure, because we had to put a sign on for it, so...
Isn't there one, there's Joe's Road, is that Foley?
Well, we really had to decipher exactly. If you're going to do it, and we can clarify this, you know, either accept it or not, we ought to at least go from the intersection of, you know, Langley, show Buzzal Road. That way we don't have that small piece from, because there's some discrepancies there where, whether or not it really is Foley or not, if you just do the whole thing down through, wouldn't that be the smart thing to do so we don't have to worry about this down the road?
Right.
Take it the, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I agree.
Because right now, we're not taking care of that piece from the intersection Langley, Buzzal Road to Foley Way.
So that if you called it from Youngs Ridge?
No.
Well...
Well, I guess, no, because that road's already established a town road. I don't think you want to put that on the...
Because it'll just clear the whole thing up. So if we took it from Youngs Ridge with the little red schoolhouses?
Just like...
All the way down to Lakeside?
Yeah, but if it fails, if it fails, then does that say?
We've already, no, we already do that one anyway.
I think from the intersection Langley...
I would say we revert back to the way it is today.
From the intersection of Langley, because that's where the issue is, is from there on.
Aren't we up?
I'd have to see a bigger map.
We're up here.
Yeah, Joe's Road is at the very end of Lakeside.
Very end.
Yeah.
Well, depends what town you're coming from.
No.
Well, it's on the other end of Lakeside Drive. So they don't want to go down that. So here's Foley Way where they want to end, but if you go down here...
So you want to stop at Foley Way?
Because then it turns into Lakeside.
And there's Joe's Road down by Cottage Lane. They don't want to go down there, they only want to do the rest of Buzzal Road.
Whatever you consider us as Buzzal Road, I mean, at the bottom of the hill?
Right there, somewhere...
There's no turnaround?
Right, where the 46 is.
There's no turnaround?
Or nothing.
And that's why you need to go farther.
That was the problem we're having.
Right.
That's Buzzal, that's where you want it to go.
Everything else, we were talking, and there's no place to turn around there.
We need to go farther.
So we always went further because of that problem. So we, that was the issue.
Because you were going all the way down that far on...
We had to, because there was no place to turn around. And you can't turn around the bottom of Foley Road. I mean, for years, you couldn't make it up that hill in the first place, and you can't turn around.
You'd have to go over and look at it.
I know.
You really ought to, because that was the issue we're having, is you can't stop at the bottom of that hill that goes straight up like this and take off and go back up, there's no place to turn around. So that's why I'm saying, if you're going to do it, you've got to figure out the length of it, and we've got to have, you know, I was under the impression that when we talked about it at the Road Committee meeting, that they were talking about going right straight through, right, what we always considered Lakeside was always, Lakeside was always after Joe's Road by the pit, that was Lakeside beyond. That's what we always considered back in the day.
Hmm.
So...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'd just like to see this when it's cleared up, I want to see it cleared up.
Yeah.
You know, and if we're going to write the article, write it right, so that we finally get rid of this problem, one way or the other.
Okay.
What are you doing in the morning?
I didn't bring all the numbers with me, but remember that this road serves 193 properties, and there is a problem with the turnaround, which is why we felt, take it all the way through. I believe that's the one mile point two, to just take it all the way through. When we drove it, we drove it in two-wheel drive after the last big storm. It's up to you guys, but that still leaves well over that amount for all these people to do on all the side roads off of it. And this, when they close the canal bridge, which is going to come up, this is our other way across town. So bear that in mind.
She's saying to plow all the way through Lakeside to H Road?
I'm not suggesting going all the way through.
No, that'd be too hard, because it's...
But, you know, that, there's, that road, I don't know, two-wheel driving, it's rough, it's bad, it's narrow, but I'm just talking to Joe's Road just to turn around. That would be what I'm suggesting. Beyond that, that was never plowed through, that never ever was, only to Joe's Road and from the other side, it was plowed in to Red Gate and Red Gate only. That whole section in the middle, all we ever did with that was just summertime maintenance, and, which, it was good, the public loved it because they used it as a trash run route, but, but the problem we had was when they shut all the roads down, that was part of the private road. So, but I'm just talking then, Joe's Road to the pit, that's where the hot top used to end.
All right, I figure we have time to look at it.
Yeah.
If we're together, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to the...
What are we doing?
We need to check it out, we need to get together.
It's going to be light enough after this meeting if we can just hop in.
That's what I was just going to say.
We can almost figure it out after this meeting.
We're going to do it right after this meeting.
Yeah, let's do that.
What are you doing? You want to go with us? Will you? Oh, come on.
I can't.
Oh, come on.
I'll do it later, I'll get ready.
Well, we'll check it out then.
Recreation Department Fees.
So just a follow-up from last week's meeting of the RET Committee and kind of our budget meeting, they did decide not to increase the rates for the kids, they decided to flatline the budget, and that seems like it's going to work out. They did wonder if the board would entertain probably, possibly, non-residents, children from out of town, maybe getting them up to $25 or $30. So all Acton kids are $20 for all sports. Most towns have a higher rate if you come from a different town if you want to play.
Yeah.
So that was something I was to ask you.
Do you think?
Kids that come from out of town, like if a Shapley child wanted to play on the Acton baseball team, instead of charging 20, they would charge 30.
I just assume, leave it flat.
Okay.
Leave it, I mean, I know last week I didn't have a problem going to the 25, but after hearing Dennis and a few others, you know, the 20 works.
For everybody.
The account has enough money in it to cover what they want to do? It's not, it's not a, it's not a case of money, they've got the money.
Yeah, and there's very few kids that come from out of town.
Yeah, and if some other kids from out of town can come and enjoy it, I'm all in favor of having the...
So leave it at 20 for everybody?
I'd say leave it at 20.
Got it.
I think I can speak for the Warren Finance Committee that we agree as far as any extra monies, they were going to increase the amounts of things that they gave to the, to the kids as far as T-shirts and trophies and things of that sort. There, it's not a flatline budget, though, it's minus 400 in one section.
Right, yes, you were correct.
I just wanted to remind you of that.
Because of the maintenance of the field, thank you for that, $400 less.
Okay.
The RET dropped their budget by $400, my mistake.
Because it doesn't, it's not costing as much to maintain it.
Okay, good.
Marijuana Ordinance Review.
So Brad Moore, one of the emails that I sent you when you discussed with him, he reviewed the ordinance as presented and was fine with it. He does want to make one change to the preamble, which generally is just going to start by saying whereas, and it's going to say the same sentence, but he reviewed all of the statutes and is fine with it moving forward the way it is. So if the board is okay with a couple of minor changes, which he will send me, he said tomorrow, I will send to your committee, again, we have a Friday deadline, actually, no, I take that back, no Friday deadline for this because it's on a secret ballot. So I will send you the minor change, send it to the board, but you guys have to sign that order calling for a secret ballot election next Tuesday to get this on a secret ballot. But he was fine with it overall.
He must have taken my copy, but I did wanted to make sure that we didn't use the word article throughout, because it's an ordinance.
Okay.
And that he promised to keep the whereas as short and simple as possible, because I liked the two sentences in the preamble. I want people to read it.
Okay, short and sweet.
Yeah.
So that's going to be on the June 12 ballot.
Okay. New Business, Annual Town Meeting Warrant Budget Recap and Updates. Okay.
So we had a workshop Saturday with Warren Finance, and then the board had a workshop yesterday, and really just trying to see, make sure the Selectmen are on the same page as far as these last numbers that are going in the warrant. Every year is a little different as far as, you know, what the board decides to move forward. You've got a lot of different things to take into consideration, so I was just hoping you would go through them and make sure that I have them right on the record of the adjustments that you're making, and we'll give the Treasurer the final okay to start printing it.
Okay, so based on the 1819 proposed budget, I'll just go down through the ones that we've changed in an effort to be responsible for the taxpayers that don't, aren't allowed to vote.
So the, and just for clarity, so the budget as presented, that bottom line was an increase of? Which the Treasurer told us was approximately a 40 cents tax increase, right?
Yep, and so we went through and deleted a few of the requests that the Board of Selectmen even made, put a few, requested, put a few things on hold from the departments that moved a few things forward, and so we won't be, we took the painting of the gym off for $6,500. Instead of getting the two generators, one for the town hall and one for Blueberry Hill for the emergency tower, we decided to move forward with just the town hall for this year, and hopes that next year we'll get the one for the Blueberry Hill.
Let's hopes that the tower group will actually hopefully come forward and take care of the one for Blueberry Hill. We really shouldn't foot the whole bill for that one.
Yep, so that's another $5,500 there. Moving forward for the Fire Capital Truck Fund, $5,000 instead of $10,000. The Road Association, the private roads had requested $150,000 to have work done on roads that were close to the bodies of water that feed the town of Acton, and we moved that down to $50,000, saving $100,000 there. We kept the transfer station parking lot on, they don't typically ask for much improvements there, and that's going to serve everybody to have a nice paved transfer station area in and out of there. Is there something else I'm missing?
Was it, yeah.
The truck. We dropped the truck from $85,000 to $70,000, thinking that, there was a few added-on items that could wait till next year or be purchased through this year's budget, right?
Yes, radios, lights, take the plow off of it for now.
And so with the decreasing these lines...
Wasn't there, I'm sorry, wasn't there, you took $5,000 out of the truck money that's going back in? What was the...
Yeah.
Yeah, we did drop that. I think you already mentioned that.
I did mention that.
She did.
Oh, maybe it was the capital improvement, the capital improvement one you didn't mention.
I didn't mention that, that's right.
So you wanted, he wanted to put $10,000 into a capital improvement account?
Oh, I just have it on, I have it as five listed here.
Okay, maybe, that was the original.
So we originally asked for 10, so it's down to five.
Okay.
And so the bottom line total overall increase is $216,439, which is a... four hundred thirty-nine, which is a...
A hundred and...
Oh, that's not on this paper, because it was on something else. So, the stipends were, the stipends that the...
Yeah, yeah, R.C., yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
The road commissioner's stipend for nineteen thousand, eight hundred, six dollars was removed. We figured, one of the road commissioners said that he really didn't need it, and the other road commissioner has enough money in his, at the end of his budget year to put in for the hours that he'd like to get reimbursed for. So, there's money still on the budget line for that.
Okay, so, we were at an increase of three hundred and fifty thousand, two forty-five. Now, we're at an increase of?
I wrote down yesterday, oh, wait, I'm looking at...
Two s...
Was it two sixteen?
Yeah.
Yep, two sixteen, four thirty-six.
Two sixteen, four thirty-nine.
Yep.
So, if everything passes as presented at town meeting...
Except...
Oh, yeah, that's not going to count, well, it's not going to count, um...
Flat ground, you mean?
Flat ground road.
Flat ground, sorry.
Yep, because if you put another article in there, there's a...
It's going to bring up, yeah.
Chance of expending.
But if it stays at the two sixteen, four thirty-nine, did she give, she never gave us a number on?
Twenty cents, approximately.
Twenty cent tax rate.
So, that'd be twenty, okay.
Can I speak on the act of flag round, on the spending part?
Yep.
Just for clarification, I guess I'm out of the loop a little bit. How far are we talking on, because you're talking about the spending part of it, have you guys had, got a distance of what you're talking, so we can get an idea of what you...
You sat in on the meeting when we were originally discussing it with Joe Lankowski.
Yeah, well, I never got a real quick clarification if it was from, to the, you know, before the river, oh, what do you call that, right after your place there, Mrs., um...
Snyder's.
Mrs. Snyder, or is it all the way to the Wakefield Bridge?
It's not to the bridge.
It's not to the bridge?
No.
It's to the length of the flat ground road.
Which is to the bridge?
Yeah.
Oh, it is? Which is how far?
Mile and a half.
Mile and a half.
Okay, I just, just for numbers, because I really haven't, I wasn't sure exactly how far or what we were doing with that. So, whether or not that was something I could take out of my budget now, but if we're talking a mile and a half road, maybe not, okay.
So, what am I doing as far as a warrant article, as far as a number? What number am I putting in there for that? So, we're going to ask the townspeople to approve the agreement if we can get, if everybody gets on the same page, and then you have to, we have to have money to back up the agreement.
Right. Do you, do you have an estimate of a mile and a half road for?
Maybe ditching and...
I, unfortunately, with all the snow we've got on the ground and everything right now, I mean, I, I gave some ballpark numbers, but we were talking, originally, I thought it was only going to be to where there was actually houses. I didn't realize we were going to go to the camp all the way to the other end of, I didn't know we were going to service the whole road. So, I mean, those numbers could jump around quite a bit.
Is there a way to do it in a, a couple-year phase, too? I mean...
Well, we'd almost have to, I think.
You know, something like that.
Well, the problem is, is if you, if they say the town accepts it, and you say, I have to plow to the end of it, where the bridge is, I've got to make it so I can plow to the end of it. So, it's awful hard to make it a two-phase deal, I've got to make it so my trucks can plow it. So...
That's good to know.
So, yeah, so, I, I can't really give a good number on it without being able to see the ground that I'd be working, so, until the snow disappears, it's going to be a little difficult.
If I may, Dennis Long, the first half-mile of the road doesn't have a very good base on it at all. The last mile has a very good gravel base. It doesn't get muddy at all in the spring, it's got pretty good drainage, so, the worst part of the road is the first part. I would recommend to do this, kind of like we did over with the guarding road, you know, you spend dollars, amounts have changed, of course, but when we started fixing the guarding road, we started a special project, we did it for quite a few years for five thousand dollars a year, and it gave a little gravel to fix the muddy places, and I, I don't think anybody, honestly, on the flat ground road is looking for a superhighway or anything. I mean, I, I plowed it with a truck with a wing, the whole length of the road, with really no problems, maybe it take out a couple of trees, maybe. And there's a place up the end to turn around, and the last place up there, we have, they're full-time residents, it's not a camp anymore, they live in there year-round. So, I wouldn't be expecting, you know, a huge amount of money.
So, you're thinking the only surface prep for a plow to go through would just be the first half-mile?
That'd be the problem spots, is the first half-mile. I mean, the rest of it, honestly, is pretty good gravel base.
And you get your, you plow all the way to the end now?
Yep.
What do you plow with?
I have plowed it with Oskos that I bought from Girdon, and while it's got a...
I've never done plowed that road.
Yeah.
Well, the bottom line is, it's got a plow and a wing on it.
Okay.
Okay? And there might be two feet difference between that truck there, what it rode with, the covers, and the ones we're using out on the tar roads. So, you know, I'm not going to get in an argument about this, it's just, I'm just telling you how the road is. I've been maintaining it for a lot of years myself, and I've done a lot of ditching myself, and I don't think anybody is better, has more knowledge about the condition of the road than I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, maybe it could be an up to, an up to amount.
Okay, how much?
Up to twenty, I mean, we had talked...
I was thinking, I had twenty in my head.
Yeah, me too.
Because you threw out twenty at one point, up to...
Up to twenty thousand, and, I mean, that would get you started.
You know, I was just throwing numbers around, because I said, you know, I didn't even really know how far we're going. The biggest problem with the road is, the road is lower than the other side of the road, so, the water sits in it, so, there's going to be some ditching and stuff. When I say, I got to prep my road so my trucks can go in and go out, okay? I can't get trucks stuck, I can't have trucks bouncing off trees when they're, you know, we do have private roads, we do that stuff with, but we don't put our big trucks in there, and, you know, typically, when we, every road that, every dirt road that I've got, in the spring and the fall, we put gravel to them, we keep them up to a point so we can, we can plow them in the winter time, without being an issue. The, the first part of that road that I know of, okay, should have some sort of cutback, it should be cut back enough so we can, you can't, when you have dirt this high above the dirt that's, you know, the road itself, it makes it difficult to get water off it, you have water, so, either it's going to be built up, ditched out, one or the other. There's, there's more work to it than just throwing some gravel down on it, you know, and wish that was the case. But, when I threw that number of twenty thousand dollars, you know, that was pretty much, you know, a ballpark of gravel from Hopper to pretty much Dennis's, because that's where I actually thought, I didn't realize we were actually going to actually think about going that far in, but, I mean, obviously, I've got to take a look at it, and before I throw a solid number, I really want to see the ground, you know, see, be able to see everything, see, you know, if we got a place that we can ditch some water and this and that, because that's the biggest problem if you drive down an alley, puddles all the way down through. So, we got to get rid of the water.
All right, thank you.
We're going to have to put a number on it.
Yep.
Still up to twenty thousand.
I'd say.
I mean...
It's a start.
It's a start.
It's a start.
You know, and then, once he checks it out, figures it out, you know, we'll know exactly what we're looking at.
How much?
Twenty.
And is that twenty thousand, is that supposed to cover the cost of just working on the road some, or is that going to be the plowing as well? And based on the agreement, if you look at the back?
Plowing, that's to fix the road, to get it up to where he can.
I really don't think that's necessary to add any money for winter time.
That's what I was thinking.
Because, you know, as we know, every year, you know, when we go over this and that...
So, it's just twenty thousand for the...
You got the fifteen percent, so, I mean, it's not going to increase loads of money, you know, it's just, just the preparation of the road so we can plow it's way we...
Yeah, it might add, what, ten, ten minutes to your route? Not even that, probably?
Well, it's, it's a dirt route, it's not a tar route. You know, depends, in, in the springtime, in the early fall, that could be a real bugger in there.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, a typical middle of winter...
Whatever, yeah, depending on the storm, but...
Time-wise, it's not a huge...
But, you know, if you call a route...
Not talking an hour.
Well, no, you could be, because by the time you take that route and go over and over many, many times, you go in it ten times, six times, that's an hour.
Yeah.
So, but it's not, that's, I'm not concerned about that, I'm not too concerned about the winter time cost at all. It's just the, the preparation so we can do that part.
Thank you.
You good?
Yes.
Moving on. Office Assistant.
Yeah, I need one.
So, you're going to put an ad in the paper?
With your okay, yes. So, for those of you that don't know, BS, my part-time assistant decided to take a position downstairs as the new land use secretary. We know that Brenda got promoted to the deputy code enforcement officer, Christina decided to take the land use position, so, we are down a warm body and looking for one, so, I'll prep a ad for next week.
Public comment.
I just want to mention that there is a D E P erosion and sediment control training class this Thursday in Saco, and this is for anybody that works on the shoreland, they must be certified. The class costs seventy-five dollars. It's also good for anybody that wants to know what they're looking at when they're looking at roads and seeing what work is done. Can let me know, or you can give them a call. It starts at eight in the morning and goes all day long, but one thing that's, that's special about this one is that they have a, a part on Stream Smart. In our low areas, this is something we need to look at as opposed to culverts, because it lasts for fifty to seventy-five years, it's more natural, and a real good way of dealing with things like, oh, even the lower end of Hopper Road or Flat Ground would probably qualify for this sort of treatment. But, I just wanted to pass it on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis Long, I have three questions or comments or something. The easement, that Joe wanted everybody to sign on the flat ground road. Does Joe remember that the town already has a fifty-foot easement on that road? You might, I wonder if he overlooked that.
Didn't you have a conversation with him?
Uh, we've talked many times.
I, I guess I can double-check with him, I mean, we've given him the entire...
If the town already has the easement, it doesn't...
We don't need the agreement?
That'd be my thought, I mean, you, you have the right to do within fifty feet. I mean, Joe said the town retained the easement, I know that.
I guess we could ask him.
Uh, I, I just, I don't know.
I got it, next.
Uh, the rec department, I, I've talked to a couple of people in the rec department, and I'm not speaking for the rec department, but I do know that they've gone out, or they're in the process of going out and getting sponsors for the uniforms and things like that, and I'm probably talking out of turn here, but I've also talked to him about some capital improvements that need to be done up at the rec field. He mentioned last week about buying a flag pole, and it was getting power in there and stuff like that. So, I was wondering, has he come back and asked for any money out of the capital improvement fund for that?
He has money in his own rec account for that.
I don't think he has enough for that, what he's, what we're planning on doing up there this year.
It is capital improvements, he's getting, we're getting quotes at this point. We have the electrician scheduled to meet with him and get a quote, we need to speak to the road commissioners and see which one of them...
Already told them to do the...
Oh, that's right, he did tell me that, I forgot about the digging.
I mean, we've got forty-some-odd thousand in the, in the capital improvement account, and there's quite a few things that really, it's been kind of...
Needs to be fixed, yeah.
Left without much improvement or maintenance up there, so, it's quite bad, really, it needs to be done. The other thing is, what's this truck thing you're talking about? You guys were talking about the budget there with the truck.
The fire truck, fire station?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Another fire truck, you mean?
No, no, it's, um, what do you call it?
Utility.
Utility or...
It's a F-five-fifty.
Yeah.
Utility truck.
Utility, they had the...
For what?
You remember years ago, Dennis, when I was fire chief, I bought two trucks from York?
Yeah.
One of them was a eighty-five GMC or Chevy. That one, they got rid of last year, we sold that one off, it wouldn't pass inspection anymore. They've got an eighty-five Ford over there that's a utility, with a utility body on it. That one's coming up and not going to pass inspection. This is to re, this truck is to replace those two trucks.
For how much money?
Well, initially, it was eighty-five, we've got it down to seventy.
Holy crap.
It's a Ford F-five-fifty.
We could put a whole new body on that truck and all new brakes, rear end and motor for less money than that.
Where is this money coming from again? Though, it's not money that...
It's coming out of the truck fund that's already established, so...
Okay.
It's, it's still our tax dollars.
It is still the tax dollars.
You know, we've been very generous with the fire department.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think, until we get things paid for...
We're just, we're just putting it out there.
Well, you are the messenger.
No, we are just putting it out there.
I just think that we've been very supportive of the fire department, and I think that we're not Rochester.
No.
No, we're not.
And we need to save a little bit of money.
So...
Go through it, Dan?
I'm done.
Okay. You sure? Yeah. Because I, you know, I gave you more time.
No, no, I used my three minutes.
Yes, you did.
Three minutes, oh, I forget about that rule.
I have two things I'd like to ask. One, can you explain to me what the status is of Flat Ground Road? Is it closed? Is it discontinued?
It's not legally closed. It's not legally discontinued either.
Okay.
They voted to close it and that passed, but then, we can't find any recording of it, so...
So, how can the town, I'm just, how can the town not maintain that road? If it wasn't legally closed, it wasn't legally discontinued, and it's not an abandoned road, the town still owns it, do they not?
We can't prove it one way or the other.
Right.
And that's the problem, that's why we want to bring it back to the people.
Well, was it, was it ever an accepted town way? My question.
It was not on that list that got turned down on Article forty-one in two thousand and ten, and...
Dennis, can you...
Was the H-road ever accepted as a town road?
Yeah, it was accepted eighteen sixty-two.
Yeah, I was going to say, years ago.
Oh, okay.
Years ago.
So, it is a town road.
But then, it was voted to close it.
Close it.
And it wasn't done properly. Not that we can find.
Okay.
One way or the other.
So, then they, then the lawyer...
You close a road...
So, then to clear, clarify this...
Yes.
We want to bring it back in two thousand and eighteen and get it straightened out once and for all.
So, what are we going to ask the town? To accept Flat Ground Road? Or are we going to ask the town whether or not we want to spend a certain amount of money?
Well, we're going to need to accept it before we spend money on it.
Exactly.
Yeah. So...
So, because it was closed...
What was the other thing the lawyer had said also, to try to find people that have been on the road when that closure had gone through, and we couldn't find it?
Yeah, we already tried that.
Yeah, there's nobody, nobody left around that was...
That could prove, they didn't have paperwork.
That could prove that they were ever notified or not notified.
Right.
So...
If we could have done that...
If you, if you look at the definition of road closure, it does not relieve the town of the responsibility of the road. It closes the road because of a bridge that's out, a tornado went through and dropped fifty trees across the road, et cetera. That I understand, I've read all of those things, but I don't, if you close it, it's only a temporary thing, it's supposed to be a temporary thing.
Well, somebody added to subject to gates and bars, which I guess means something completely different.
Means they retain the easement.
The road is, is closed, but we retain the easement to the road, so, it's a quagmire, the whole thing is a quagmire.
Yeah, it's a mess.
It's a mess, and we're trying to straighten this mess out, so...
And this is the suggestion of the lawyer.
What's your point? My point is, you know, it wasn't discontinued, it was simply closed, so, we still own it, so, we should still maintain it, my opinion.
Right.
And that'll be up to the town to vote.
So, now, I'm going to move on to my second item. Second item is communication, emails. It was my understanding, when I first got on Warrant Finance, that if you are, or if you are conducting town business, that you want to use the Town Server, because if you're conducting town business, Freedom of Information Act, anybody should be able to pull that, you know, get that information. If I'm getting emails to my private, you know, email address, that's not correct.
Then you should tell that person to say, stop sending it.
I already have, and I'm doing it publicly right now.
Okay.
Okay? Emails, conducting town business should be done on the Town Server. If, for some reason, there's a problem, then we need to try and resolve that problem, but, you know, for the most part, you know, the Town Server's not exactly easy to use sometimes, but, town business on the Town Server.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all done.
Brendan Meehan, taxpayer, extremely disturbing behavior by the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator Saturday at the Warrant and Finance Committee. This board allowed an employee of this town to disrespect, harass, and demean one of